Excuse me, before we get started here, part of the state stats, we have to wait till seven o'clock for the meeting. That's on the top side. If you have any cell phones, please put it on silent, except if you're emergency personnel only. So if you're a fireman or something, you can keep your cellphone on or your radios on, but all the rest, just put them on silent, please, during this session. We would also ask you to stand, if you wish, or we would like you to stand and give your name and address for the records. So if we have to go back and, and if Amy or Ron want, if you have a question about what you see, and then they can answer it. What house number, or what, where we are, what street we're on, that would be appreciated, so. Okay. Who calls meeting to order? Will call?
Mayor Dieter.
Here.
Carrie Luntzle.
Here.
Bob Brick.
Here.
Betty Neese.
Here.
Crystal Flue.
Here.
Mel Enninger.
Here.
Wally Snobin.
Here.
Larry Van Cretsch.
Council's in session. Utility?
Mayor Dieter.
Here.
Jeff Whitman.
Here.
Mary Jo Krieger. Wally Snobin.
Here.
Joel Leiva.
Here.
Dave Schwann.
Here.
Leonard Kupenlansky.
Here.
Dan Martin.
Here.
Utilities in session. Approve of the agenda? Also approve as printed and circulated? Motion made by Mel and seconded by Chris. Crystal, approve the agenda as circulated, printed and circulated? Any questions or corrections? Hearing none, I will say aye.
Aye.
With more than a period. Can we get one more seat for the young lady back here, please?
Oh, I'm fine.
Are you fine? Okay. Are you sure?
Yeah, don't worry about that.
Don't fall asleep on us now.
No.
There's a couple chairs right in front.
Or you could sit right here in the front in big chairs. Don't be bashful.
There you go.
There.
There you go.
They just elected you their leader.
We're in trouble.
At this time, our meeting could be 2015 Clearwater I-N-I remediation and street reconstruction project public information meeting. That's why we are here today, to inform the citizens of the streets that we'll be working on in the next couple of years. To meet the mandate of the Department of Natural Resources requested us that we must do. We have to get to clear water. That's, that's not gray water, that is go to wastewater treatment plant to be taken out of the system. At this time, we have Amy Bakelik and Ron Wolf of McMahon. We hired the McMahon Engineering as our consultant. They go through and they find the areas that we're having problems with, how to get the I-N-I out. The, they come back with the information, with some of the information you'll see here tonight. It goes to utility. Utility Commission determines what streets we should be doing and why we're doing it. And from that point, utility either approves or rejects it. If they approve it, it goes to the city council, and we approve it on our end to give McMahon the authority to start proceeding with the street repair. All street repairs goes out on bids. We get three or four bids, five bids, whatever it is. And then we, we look at the bids, and we decipher it from that point on, who has the lowest bid, or we feel is the most competent of doing the job. But we always try to look for the lowest bid, and...
Yeah, Carrie.
Laurie, Laurie will take from here.
What I want to do before Amy and Ron start with their presentation is just give an overview of the history of how, how we got to where we are today with this I-N-I reduction program that we've been working on. Back in October of, October 29th of 2010, the DNR issued a notice of violation to the city of Brilliant because of sanitary sewer overflows. And then on December 13th of 2010, the DNR and the city entered into a compliance agreement, which identifies actions the city will take to implement, eliminate the sewer system overflows. These overflows are bypass events, or when heavy, happen after heavy rainfalls, when the city's sanitary sewer system cannot keep up with the high flows, and the system is bypassed at the wastewater treatment plant, and basically what it means by bypass is it flows right onto the ground. Note that in 2014, so far this year, we've received four notices from the DNR of violations of bypasses. In this year alone. There's a lot of, you know, there's, there's a lot of pieces of this. But the biggest piece that we're looking at right now is the reduction of the system and trying to get it out of the system. There's another piece that fits in it with it, and then some of you have been following along and noticing that we've been working with the DNR, and where does all this go, once it gets to treatment plant that's treated, and where is the outfall? The outfall's into the Brilliant Marsh. So that's another piece of it that we've been working on too. During the study that the utility has been working on with the DNR for the last, since 2010 and 2012, they did an extensive study, and during this study, it was found that the majority of the source of I-N-I, the Clearwater, is entering the sanitary system, is coming from private laterals, which Amy will show you on her, she's got some slides that she may have handed over already tonight. A facility plan to address wet weather peak flows was submitted to the, by the city to the DNR in December of 2011. The recommended, recommended plan included in the facility plan was to eliminate, implement, I'm sorry, implement a citywide private sanitary sewer lateral remediation program and other projects. The city has already completed some of the other projects to reduce the I-N-I, which included a survey of manhole covers with replacement of any covers that had open picks on. This was done in 2011. Repairs were made to interceptor manholes in Spring Creek that was done in 2012. Approximately 1,000 linear feet of clay sewer pipe, six manholes, and sewer laterals from the sewer main to the property line were replaced with the Highway Town Project done in 2012. And approximately 250 linear feet of clay sewer pipe was slip lined with PVC pipe, and two manholes were replaced in Horn Park. We found that that was another area where we noticed some high flows. That was done in 2012. And ongoing efforts still continue with time of sale Clearwater inspections, which means that any house that was constructed prior to the year 2000, when it's sold, there's a Clearwater inspection done to make sure there's no illegal connections happening there. Then in 2012, the city adopted ordinances and policies to help administer the I-N-I remediation projects. And one of them, there are some of the samples are on the tables, or the sections of the codes, or you can go to the city website and find it. There is a code that specifically talks about the private sewer laterals. And that is section 98-197. If you go on our city's website, it is on our municipal code. You can find it there easily. During remediation projects, the city is, kind of talked about how these projects take place. But the city is required that the property owner replace their private, or remediate their private lateral if it's found to be defective. And we'll explain to you how that, that investigation is done prior to a project being bid out. The property owner may elect then, how they're going to take care of their repairs to their laterals, and they'll, they'll have an option of how they want to get that work done too, and that's how the projects are bid out. And Amy and Ron will help explain how that's done. Then in 2012, the utility talked about, after reviewing wet weather televising video, they were trying to consider which project would be their first project, and they talked about Trier Street, which a number of you are residents on that street, and that would be their first sanitary sewer remediation project. However, after, concerns voiced by residents on there, because in the year 2000, there was a street project done which included Dewey Pine and Trier Streets. And the utility thought, well, yes, that street is fairly new. It doesn't pay to rip it up at this time. Rather, they talked about doing full street reconstruction projects, which included curved gutter sidewalk, driveways, the street, the water main, the sewer main, and the laterals, and storm sewers. Do it all. We did that in 2013 with Francis Street. In Francis Street, there was approximately 20 laterals that were found defective, private laterals. And after it, we did televising and none showed any evidence of anything flowing out. So we feel that's a successful project. However, then moving forward, the DNR has asked us to put together a capital plan to continue working on these, this remediation effort. And the utility and council worked from January until just last month with our financial advisors on putting together a financial capital plan. And what our advisors, our financial advisors, were telling us is a certain amount of money that we can afford to borrow for projects. And the utility and the council determined that it would be best to, because of the mandate we have being enforced by us, by the DNR, to put our efforts towards cleaning up the I-N-I and trying to do street projects where we can. So then we turned around and looked at where, where the next project would be, and that's why all of you are here. So, that's kind of a history, and a lot of it will be explained in their presentation.
Just, just so we enlighten you a little bit, as we do streets, this is me going on in the future. Each homeowner, every, every one of us in this room are homeowners, and we'll all get the same thing as you're getting tonight. We might be sitting out in the office, out in the audience, listening to the same thing again as we proceed here, because it's called continuous improvement, and we're being mandated by DNR. Laurie has to report every month and a half.
Every two months.
Every two months, Laurie has to report to the DNR, and we have to show what we have been doing. So, and if we can find, it's not only the city, the city is you people. You are the city, along with us, as citizens. We pay to find upfront, but it comes out of each one of our pockets at the end of the tax year. It's not a very pleasant thing that we go through. We spend a lot of hours trying to determine what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. We try to find the most cost-effective method that we could find out there, what is the most useful thing that we could do to prevent cost overhead. And like I said, we're going to be there in the same shoes that you people are, and it's only going to be a matter of time we'll be there. So at this time, Amy, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, turn this floor over to Amy Bakelik of McMahon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor says, my name's Amy Bakelik, and I have with me Ron Wolf. We're both civil engineers with McMahon, and we've worked with the city of Brilliant for many years since the 1990s. Some of you in this audience have seen parts of this presentation before, but I know it's going to be new to some of you, so I wanted to start from the very beginning. Some of the things I'm going to be talking about are, I want to give an overview of the wastewater system and talk about the wastewater system flows, so you'll know that what we're dealing with. Give you some definitions of what inflow and filtration or Clearwater are. Talk about the I-N-I investigations that have been conducted, and then talk about the 2015 I-N-I reduction project. The city of Brilliant wastewater system serves almost all of the homes within the city of Brilliant. And originally, the wastewater treatment plant was built in Peters Park. Some of you may remember when that was located there, right there where it says Main LS. Then back in the late 1980s, a new wastewater treatment plant was built on the south end of town. But the system was still configured, the majority of the flows flow to this main lift station here in Peters Park. And then it's pumped out to the plant here at the south end of town. This just shows a detail here of where the pump station is located. Over the years, the flows have continued to increase at the plant and the lift station, although the population has not significantly increased. And the reason that the flows are increasing is because the heights on the ground are deteriorating, are becoming inadequate. And during some rain events, the flows of the plant have exceeded 1,500 gallons per minute, which exceeds, or double the typical range, which ranges between 400 to 600 gallons per minute. A lot of the city wastewater system was constructed prior to 1950, with a lot of it being built around 1930. A lot of it is constructed of short sections of clay pipe, in some cases only about three feet long. And over time, the joints have become out of alignment, and the systems are just reaching the end of their useful life and need to be maintained at this time. As the systems continue to deteriorate, Clearwater enters the system, and that's what's starting to overload the system. Clearwater also enters the system through defects or illegal connections. Infiltration or inflow is also flow. I-N-I or Clearwater, and Laurie has already used that term, and I'll also be using it here through my presentation. Infiltration is water entering the system through the ground by means such as defective pipes, manhole walls, or manhole pipe penetrations. Inflow is water entering the system through more direct sources, such as downspouts connected directly into the pipe, manhole lids, sump pump connections, that kind of thing. Not so much defects, but direct connections. Thank you for here, by describing the various sources and how Clearwater can get into the sanitary sewer system. Here on the right, this shows what the pipes look like underneath the street. You have, this one here represents the sanitary sewer. That's the wastewater, the water that comes from your toilets and your sinks, that kind of thing. And the kind of defects that you get in that include cracks, or at the joints, the joints can come apart in there. Also, the manholes can deteriorate, and you can get cracks in there. Also, you have a storm sewer. That's the pipes that convey the, when the rainwater runs off the streets, but the water flows into what we call the storm sewer. And sometimes, over time, those storm sewers are connected directly into the sanitary sewers, and that can cause problems. Then this pipe here is what we refer to as a lateral. That's the pipe that connects your home into the sanitary sewer main out into the street. And that's, deteriorates also over time, because as I mentioned, a lot of those are constructed of that clay pipe, and they crack over time, and a lot of times where they crack, or the joints come apart, tree roots can grow into those cracks, and then as the tree roots grow more and more, they force them open more and more, and that's where the water can start getting into them. Sometimes they just break. They just, you know, wear out and deteriorate. And then I've also kind of started to talk about, sometimes there's illegal connections into these laterals. Sometimes people connect their downspouts into them, or their foundation drains, or even their sump pumps are connected into the laterals, and then into the sanitary sewers. Sewer system overflows are also a term that you made here tonight, and that is really one of the main things that is being regulated by the DNR. Sewer system overflows are when the sewer system does not have enough capacity to convey the flows that are entering into the system. And like Laurie mentioned, really what happens is the flow just comes out of the system, flows onto the ground. Some of you may have found situations where Peters Park has had to be closed because the wastewater has actually had to flow onto the ground, because the lift station just can't handle all the flows and convey it to the treatment plant. And as Laurie mentioned, there has been many events since 2010 that had happened prior to that, but since then, the DNR has really gotten serious about cracking down on the city on having those overflow events. Laurie really already covered all of this, the violation notices and the fact that the city has to meet with the DNR. Investigations that we've been conducting since 2010 included flow monitoring. We actually installed meters in the sanitary sewers during the spring to monitor the flows throughout the different parts of the city to try and figure out where the highest flow rates were coming from. We did smoke testing, which is generally done to determine if there's connections between a storm sewer and the sanitary sewer. Did wet weather televising to see where the flow is actually coming from, and then also televising on private laterals, excuse me. This graph here shows a typical situation. This line here represents the flows to the wastewater treatment plant. This is over March through June period. And then these bars here, these are rain events. The rain, the amount of rain here is on the left axis, and then the flow to the plant here in million gallons per day are on the right. And so you can see that the flow peaks in correlation to the rainfall events. And that shouldn't be happening, because the rain should not be getting in to the wastewater. They should be separated. As part of the DNR requirement, the city was required to prepare a facilities plan, which is essentially an engineering report looking at various options of how to address the sewer system overflows. So the first thing we looked at was how would we increase the capacity of the lift station and the wastewater treatment plant to deal with the flows. We had to project what the peak flow actually is. The flows are so great that they just overwhelm the meter. They can't even be metered. And they're pulling pumps from the fire department to pump the flow out of the lift station and everything. But we estimated that the peak flows are about 9 million gallons a day, and the capacity of the plant is only 3 million gallons per day. So it's, it's a huge overload. But we did a preliminary concept that the main lift station would have to be enlarged. A new pipe would have to be built from the Peters Park Lift Station all the way out to the plant, and then all of the treatment systems would also have to be expanded. The projected cost for that, and this was back in 2010, was over $10 million. And that's a huge cost, but then also the problem with that is that would only be used on occasion when you have these big rain events. And wastewater treatment really doesn't work that way. Wastewater treatment likes to run on a steady flow. It doesn't react very well to having flows up and down, up and down, especially on such a huge difference. And so there would be huge operational problems with having a plant that's built to treat 9 million gallons a day when you're only actually running less than a million gallons a day on average. So this really would be an operational problem to deal with this kind of plant. Another option we looked at was how would we deal with the I-N-I within the system, and try and get it out of the system. And that's when we started looking at the lateral remediation program that we have started talking to a little bit tonight. Looking at remediating the laterals from the building connections to the sanitary sewer mains. I mean, projected cost for that is about $4 to $6 million as compared to the $10.5 million that I just mentioned to you. So it was decided to proceed with that type of plan, rather than looking at expanding the lift station and the plant. These next two slides talk about projects that the city has already undertaken, and again, Laurie has already touched on pretty much all of these. This figure here shows the five-year I-N-I reduction plan that the Utility Commission and the City Council has developed. And the area that we're going to focus in on tonight here is the 2015 project area. But future projects have been laid out for the next five years, and they do include I-N-I reduction and street reconstruction. And the street reconstruction portions are shown, kind of like how this area north of Bryan Street is shown with the hatching. This area down in here would include street reconstruction and I-N-I removal. Laurie did touch a little bit on the ordinances and policies. The Utility Commission spent a lot of time going back and forth with the DNR and the city attorney developing these policies. These policies were used successfully on the Francis Street project. The main policy, and we've got the handout here, is the private sewer lateral ordinance, where the city of Brilliant requires that the property owner is responsible for the replacement or the remediation of the lateral, if the lateral is found to be in violation of the city ordinances. And that reflects to if the lateral is found to be defect. And on this slide here, it does list what the defects are for the various laterals. Any visible leak, evidence of pipe or joint deterioration, root intrusion that separates the pipe, misalignment of a pipe, necessary clean-out cap or manhole cover, defective materials, downspout drain or other connection that allows stormwater to enter the lateral. The last one, thankfully, we don't have too much problem with, is a flaw that allows discharge of sewage onto the property. Work that was done this year includes, wet weather televising was conducted within the 2015 project area during this strength, and these dates here are times when there were those sewer system overflows that we talked about when we did the violations from the DNR. The 98 private laterals were extra televised. We were able to run a camera in the sanitary sewer, and the camera can be launched from the sanitary sewer up into the lateral, and I'll show you some pictures of those. And then we also televised a little over 4,000 linear feet of sewer line. There's many lateral defects were identified during that time, breaks in pipes, cracks, roots, grease. And a lot of infiltration were also identified, and a lot of flow coming through. Forty-one of the laterals were identified with infiltration coming through. That's about 42% of the laterals that were televised were flowing. And I know a lot of people will say, well, people were probably using water, but this was done during a weekday. I know the one video I'll show you was 1 o'clock on a weekday, and every single lateral was flowing. And I know on my street, hardly anybody's home at that kind of day, on a weekday, so I don't think there would be flow coming through every single lateral. On the main line, sewer defects, really the main lines were in generally very good condition. There were some roots that had to be cut off. There were some roots that had to be cut out at several locations, and there were some pipe fractures. And those can be repaired as part of the project. Now I do have some photos here. These are actually the laterals, generally six-inch laterals. I just tried to pick some random ones that showed good pictures, but these are root balls starting to encroach into a lateral. Roots hanging down. Again, these are either coming in through a joint that's separated or through cracks. And if joint, and if roots are getting in, and that also means that water is getting in, and that's not going to seal up by itself, it's just going to continue to get worse. Here's another one, looks a lot like the first one, but it is a different one, but it's growing even bigger and bigger. And then also, some of you may know, as this thing, as things like this go on over time, then your sewers get plugged up too. More roots. This one, it doesn't show up real well on a still shot, but this is water flowing in through a joint probably. This shows some cracking, again in the lateral. Shows, kind of gives you an idea of the type of type of pipe that we've been talking about. This shows a crack around the lateral here. I'm not sure here, also maybe a crack here opening.
I have a question.
Sure.
A slight effect, you mentioned that when you did this, everyone just was running at one o'clock in the afternoon. Was it raining that day?
Yes.
It was raining?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, it was during those big rain events, one in April and one in May. That's, I tried to use the term wet weather televising, that's what we try to get right in there when it is actually raining, so then we can identify where the defects are. This one, there's a big hole here, and roots growing in, and then also the person conducting the televising identified that it was leaking. This shows the joint is separated here, again it looks like there's roots. This one, it looks like there was a repair. This is PVC pipe, and it looks like this was clay pipe, but then when it was repaired, they weren't joined very well, and over time, this is just opened up. So this is just a huge opening in the lateral. I really have a, oh, right on top of that. This is a video of one of the streets. I'm just going to show you a couple of laterals that are flowing. That shows one there.
Now that's a brick on top of the pipe, right?
That's the lateral.
The lateral?
Connects the home into the pipe.
That one, okay. That's clear water?
Yep. This is the contraption that's used, that's the light, and then the camera sits back up here, and then they're able to launch the lateral, the camera up into the lateral. And then, and that, that's actually saved on a different file, so we don't see that Here's another one. So on this section of pipe, I've got nine laterals, and every single one was flowing. So I don't know if you need to see some more of that, but it pretty much looks all the I'm going to start talking more specifically about the 2015 project, which is shown here on this figure and that you got with the letter that was sent to your home. There's actually two kind of separate parts to the project, and I'm going to try to be real careful tonight to be clear about which part I'm talking about. The area south of Ryan Street, which includes Columbus Avenue, Schley, Dewey, and Trier Street, that project includes just replacement or remediation of the defective laterals from the terrace, which is the area between the curb and the sidewalk to the homes. The intention is not to rip up the street. Did you have a question? Did I misspeak already?
Totally.
Okay. The intention is not to rip up the streets on those areas. So it's going to include, if we need to, we'll do spot repairs of the main line sewers, remediation of the private sanitary laterals, construction of mini storm sewers in the terrace, and construction of storm sewer laterals. The property owner will be given the option of selecting the lateral remediation options, and that would include open cutting or pipe bursting.
You said that's if it's needed. When do you identify whether it's needed for a certain home?
Right. That's what we use the televising for.
So when you're further into the project, you'll go down each one, and then the homeowner will be told whether or not it's going to happen?
Right. What did you say? The reason we included the mini storm laterals in this project is because it's really important that the foundation drains and the sump pumps not be connected into the sanitary laterals. And the city realizes that that's a problem, that people have nowhere to go with their sump pump discharges. And so that's why they're including the mini storm sewers and the option of installing a storm lateral in with the project. The homeowner may also elect to have a sump pump crack installed as part of the project, and then it would be up to the homeowner to have a sump pump installed. Foundation drains or drain tiles do not have to be installed as part of the project, but the homeowner may want to consider having that done. Now this is for the Columbus Avenue portion on north of Ryan Street. That is going to be a full street reconstruction project, and it's going to include water and sewer main replacement in the right-of-way, sidewalk curb and driveway apron replacement as needed, street reconstruction, and then it's also going to include the INI lateral replacement project, similar to what's being done on the south side of Ryan. So the replacement of the sanitary laterals all the way from the main to the home, and then the mini storm sewers and construction of the storm sewer laterals.
I got a question on the mini storm sewers. I address 700 North Columbus Street, and on Columbus, on north Columbus, there is no storm sewers on that street, on the end, the north end of the street. Where I live, I had an easement to the city, and they put a pipe through my property, and that dumps out onto my property in the back. So all the, all the water that comes from north Columbus comes from about approximately where Mike Creppeline lives, it comes down Maple Street, it comes down from Maple Street, all goes down through my property and dumps in the back. What is going to happen with that storm sewer? Are they going to connect that and go someplace else with that water? Or are they going to continually dump it on my lot from the back? Or are they going to continue with that pipe down to the creek, or what's going to happen? Because I can't keep on getting all that water. I had called the city a few times, and they were going to look at it, and that's as far as it got. But if you're going to add sump pump water and everything else, there's just more water going to be coming through there.
Well, unfortunately, I'm going to say that's something we're going to have to look at, and you're going to say, "Oh, they've already told me, I'm going to look at it." So we are in the very-
Well, I just want to make sure-
Yeah.
I was just wondering if that project, you could put a new storm sewer, or that storm sewer pipe in someplace else, or what's going to happen?
I had this statement a little bit later in my presentation. One reason we wanted to bring you all in tonight is because we're going to start field surveying in the next week or so, and we didn't want to have our field surveying crews out in your neighborhood and then have you guys all say, without knowing anything, saying, "Oh, what is all this field surveying going on?" So we're in the very beginning preliminary stages. But if you would come up and give us your address, so we know exactly where your concerns are, so we can look at that. And on the last slide, I did have construction of mini storm sewers and terrace if needed. Right now, we just don't know where the storm sewers are all going to go. We haven't done any design work on it yet. We're all just in the preliminary concept stages.
Will the homeowners know when you're going to be doing the surveying of our properties?
Will they be coming on their property?
No, not at this point. The survey work that's going to be done here this fall is just going to be external surveys. So we'll be surveying probably, you know, the front corners of your structure, just to kind of tie that in with the streets, and doing topo surveys up and down the street right-of-way. But we won't have, there'll be no personnel on anybody's house at this point. There may be storms that goes between homes or something, we might be chasing that outdoor discharges or something. So you might see them in your backyard, possibly if you've got a stormwater discharge pipe or something of that sort. But we won't be in anybody's structure at this point. The in-home part of it would start basically with construction. We'll identify in project plans typical repair methods. We don't necessarily have to know at each property exactly what we're going to do until we get into the bidding phase of it. Everyone's going to be a little unique. There will be home visits, and we'll get into that, probably even another meeting, I imagine.
Right.
There'll probably be a meeting right before construction to go through the additional steps that would take place, because there will have to be an onsite visit with the contractor. At that point, we want to get the contractor involved, because then the contractor's going to have to visit basically each basement and each homeowner and go through, you know, how the connection is going to be done, what the options are. There might be some things going on with price. Some of the property owners may elect to do the work themselves. There is an option for them to hire their own plumber and do it in advance of the city project. So that'll all come at a later date, but the work that's going to happen this fall is just out on the street for the most part.
The 2015 project will be publicly bid, and will be done as a swimming project. And the bidding will happen on next spring. And the total cost of the project will be divided between the city, the utility budget, and the property owner. The property owner will be assessed, which means bill proportions of the project cost, including the construction, administration, legal, engineering, and contingency costs. Estimates of the assessment will be given to the property owner, and then the city will hold a public hearing, and costs will be refined once bids are received. Costs to be assessed to the property owners will include, just as I've been talking already about tonight, replacement of private sanitary laterals, the sump pump crack, the mini storm sewers, the storm sewer laterals, and then on Columbus Avenue, we'll have the curb, sidewalk, and driveway apron replacement. And then the construction contract will include a two-year settlement guarantee. So if any work that's happened on your property settles within a two-year time period, the contractor will be responsible to come back and repair that. The schedule that we're looking at for this work, as I mentioned, we already did the televising back in April and May, and we're meeting with you tonight. The field surveying is going to be starting in the next couple weeks, and we're going to start working on the plans in December and early next year, opening bids in March, and moving forward with the public hearings after we open bids. Then the individual site visits will happen in April and May, and you will be contacted, and those site visits will be scheduled, because the homeowner will have to be there when those happen. So you will be contacted for those. And then we hope to start construction in June and finish the project in September of next year. As I already talked about, the project is in the beginning stages, and we haven't started the design. We do have the Francis Street project costs to use as a guide for what we anticipate the cost will be. But we wanted to bring you in to meet, again, as I said, because we're going to be doing the field surveying, and to start giving you some idea of what the project cost would I think I already kind of said this a couple times, of what's going to be included on the area south of Ryan, and then the project costs on the area north of Ryan is the lateral replacement and the street construction components. The costs are split between the city, which goes on the general tax levy, the utility cost, which goes on the water and sewer rates, and then the property owner. The assessments may be paid in installments, and if the assessment is over $1,500, you have five years to pay it. Five to, $500 to $1,499, you have three years to pay it. And if it's $500 or less, there is no option for installments. Invoices are mailed on or before October 1st of each year and due November 1st. The final assessments will depend on the actual amount of work that's done and the contractor bid costs. So any information that we give you tonight is just a projection. We don't have exact numbers tonight. You'll be given a preliminary cost estimate when the site visits are conducted next spring, and then the property owners will have the opportunity, if they want to hire their own contractor, you can go ahead and do that. But a city permit will be required if you're going to hire your own contractor to do the This first sheet shows the total project cost for the various streets, and it's split out between street reconstruction, the sanitary sewer reconstruction, water main, the storm sewer work, and then the total project cost. And the grand total is down in the bottom right-hand corner, $670,000. Now for the area south of Ryan Street, which is just the INI remediation project, the typical assessment is approximately $5,500. And that includes the sanitary remediation, storm lateral on private property, and the mini storm sewer system in the terrace. If you're on the north side of Ryan, the street reconstruction typical assessment cost, that includes the sidewalk aprons, curb and gutter replacement. That cost is approximately $1,000. curb and gutter replacement, that cost is approximately one thousand eight hundred dollars. And then you would have the added-on INI, that's also included in the area south of Ryan, of five thousand five hundred dollars, for a total of estimated seven thousand three hundred dollars. That's all I have to, prepared to present, but we'd be glad to answer any questions.
I was gonna say, when you get on the Francis Street project, you said you had humping connections that were bad or something. What actually did you save in all those rainwater, what do you wanna call it?
We haven't been able to quantify it, because we didn't measure exactly, but we did.
You didn't measure after a project like that with all this?
No, because we would have to put a meter in before and after, and there's costs to doing that. But we did televise it and it was dry.
It'd be interesting to see the gallons.
I know.
And it also said nine million gallons when it rains, with a three million capacity. Then all of a sudden, it's a summer long line, changed to one million. What is the capacity, actually?
The capacity of the wastewater treatment plant is three million gallons. The nine million gallon is what we are projecting the peak is, but that cannot be conveyed. That's what the fire station, the fire department pumps, pumping everything up onto the ground. And that's what we estimate would like to go to the wastewater treatment plant, but cannot.
We continue to talk about illegal connections. What's, what's been done to see what kind of illegal connections are out there? I mean, have we done anything to look at that?
Yes, the city had all of the parking lots inspected to see if there was any catch basins connected, and they found nothing. They inspected all of the downspouts in the commercial areas of the city, and they found none connected. They had the clear water inflow, or the time of sale inspections. And anytime any of the operators are going into the homes, and they are finding a few things there, but nothing significant.
So we don't think that things are being changed and then changed back, potentially?
There is a potential for that, but.
And we're only doing time of sale? I mean, how many, I guess, how many houses do we know have been looked at?
I would have to get that from the building inspector, I don't have it tonight.
I was just telling the council earlier tonight that we had at least about, or forty letters of, they're called real estate party letters, meaning the property is being sold. And when we receive that, then that's when the building inspector's notified if he needs to go in and do a clear water inspection. So it's typical for a building inspector to do those. Gosh, he's got one at least once a week, you know, or once every other week, something like that has been averaging. He's averaging quite a few. So he's been getting at homes. And whether or not he sees, you know, do they do it, you're suggesting, I don't know. He can't find evidence of it. You know, when he's there, he doesn't see, you know. He has seen a couple and they have been corrected, and he's notified them. And then they have to have that corrected before the home can be sold. Then he goes back in and does reinstruction to make sure it's corrected. So there have been a couple that he has cut.
So we're saying that there is six million gallons of water getting in only through these laterals then? During heavy rains?
Oh, I think there's potential that it's getting through in other areas. We're saying that there's six million gallons extra of water.
But we're saying that there's, we're not seeing anything from a sump pump standpoint or drains from public buildings or anything of that nature. So that only leaves us with what we're talking about here. That seems to be an awful lot of water for, you know, the small leaks that you showed. I mean, I'm not saying it's not a problem, but it's six million gallons.
Well, we're saying that a big portion of it is coming through the laterals, that's true.
Six million gallons.
When we do have, this fire department has to pump, we can pump seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute. I do remember being at Peter's Park, that station for twelve hours, twelve plus hours pumping water.
How many?
Twelve plus hours, maybe. It's a long shift, at seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So it could be. That's unreasonable, from what I know.
I'm still curious, we, you know, we went through this two years ago. How did we get back to this end of town again? When, you know, we had, you guys had identified not only Francis, but Cleveland and several other streets on the other end of town that were of a major concern. We did one street, and now we completely moved to a section that really, you know, wasn't being considered for several more years yet, from what we had been told last time. How did we end up back on this end of town? I'm just curious. When I, I mean, I can pull up all the, all the information we had from two years ago that you guys put out that said, this is your area of concern, you need to start here, here, and here. We would've been, this whole area actually, would've been fourth, fifth, sixth on the list. And now we're back.
This core area of the city has always been a concern area.
I'm not saying it was not a concern area, but it wasn't a high concern. What changed in, you know, a year?
Trier Street has always had a lot of flow from the laterals. We showed that to you before.
I understand that. We said, you guys, you guys kept saying you had the most information on our street too. Because that was the only street you ever came and did until this year.
Right.
Of course, you're gonna have the most information. What I'm saying is, we talked about this a year ago, and you guys identified, you being McMahon and the city identified these areas. And now, we took care of one street out of, I'd have to look back to see how many were down there, but, and all of a sudden, boop, we're back up to this end of town again. It says that we're gonna do it within, along with street reconstruction. This whole area that's being looked at now, there's only one street that's having a street reconstruction. We're only gonna go three-quarters of the way out from the house. So that leaves a seam, does it not? Of some sort, or exposed, you know, still old clay pipe there?
Unfortunately, the city had decided that they had to move away from the full street reconstruction, because it was just too expensive. But they have to do something. They can't continue to have these sewer sewer, sewer system overflows.
I understand that.
And so that's why they had to scale back to doing the, just the INI remediation projects. And the reason they wanted to look at doing Columbus, North Orion Street, because they have some grant money on that, a very small amount of grant money. And the utility commission wanted to keep the project areas grouped within areas. They didn't want us to do, you know, a street here and a street here. And so it was just partly logical.
So we left the Francis Street group, that was one group?
That was, well, it was a reasonable section that the city felt that it would, could afford. I mean, it was a continuous block, it was like two blocks.
Okay, but what happened to Cleveland Street? Which was the biggest problem at the time, when we went through this last time?
I don't think it was the biggest problem.
Well, it was the second biggest, never thinks of Francis Street, and if I have to pull out the stuff, I mean, it's your minutes and notes and their information that said, this is where you need to start, 'cause this is where the biggest issue is.
At that time, you were looking at the street construction, you could see that the Tilden Street had street construction that needed to be looked at too.
But it was INI that we were talking about, it had nothing to do with street construction at the time. No, it wasn't.
That's where it is, and there, next time you ask for it, it's right behind it. You can argue that or not, but it's right there, so it's.
Well, the point, the point, the point of this meeting is, we are here, the council, the utility and the council had made a decision, we are going to be doing these streets. We have no choice. It is what it is. We can't detour from it, because the whole, every, every street plan is gonna get it. Doesn't matter if it's here today or 2015, it really doesn't matter. We have to resolve the problem, because we're mandated, mandated by the information that DNR passed down to us. It's irrelevant. And each one of us are in, are in the same boat. We're all gonna be doing the same thing. We can sit here all night long and talk about what we did here, what we did here, what we should've done. As we proceed with this, we might get better at it. We're finding things that maybe we don't, we just gotta put storm sewers between the curb and the sidewalk to help out and reduce the cost. That's what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to spend people's monies, that's the last thing we wanna do here. But this is reality, folks. We can't change it. It's here, it's here, right here in documentation, you all read it. And it's just the way it is. Sorry. But we are going to proceed. And Amy laid out everything for, for the homeowners, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. And that's the way we have to proceed. We're ballin', that's it.
I got a question.
Yes.
How does the city of Milwaukee avoid all of these issues with the DNR? When they pump all that water into Lake Michigan every time it rains?
City of Milwaukee right now, it cost them thirty-eight million dollars. They had to go upstream and start blocking the stream up. They got big problems in Milwaukee, Milwaukee's paying it right now. It's costing them millions and millions of dollars to resolve their problem in Milwaukee.
But they're not resolving the problem, they may be cleaning the fine.
No, no, they're, no, no, they're, they're going up, we just had a meeting two months ago on that. We had people from Milwaukee come up here, and they discussed it with us. And they're, they're gonna be talking a billion dollars by the time they're done to remediate with DNR, the rules that they put down, what we're trying to do now. They got big problems. They got, they're trying to reverse a river, so it flows in a different direction. So it, it's here, it's Kakana, it's Appleton, Oshkosh, it's every place, it's the same problem as we got here. INI, you gotta get it out of the system, 'cause they don't wanna go into the market. They don't want no gray water going in, yes.
Was there any thought given to pipe lining, any of those methods, secured-in-place pipe or the lateral lining? As a cheaper alternative than total street construction?
Be slip lining, but Ron can maybe, you wanna tell them all?
Manhole, manhole, non-invasive.
It, it, slip lining pipes has its place, but it's more expensive per foot in most cases than just digging a pipe up and replacing it. You can argue about where the cost belongs in terms of patching the street back up and all the rest. But it's, it's probably still cheaper pound-for-pound to dig a trench, replace the sewer line right down the middle of the street and patch it back than it is to slip line it. Slip lining is still expensive. Most of these laterals, however, just kinda go off a little bit of a tangent, most of them are being replaced though with pipe bursting. A little different method. What, what you're talking about, the original pipe stays in place. Your expensive composite liners blown up and cured in place inside of the old pipe. And the old pipe stays intact for the most part. With pipe bursting, there's a hydraulic machine that's pulled through the old pipe. And in most of these cases, they're clay, they break very easily, that's the whole crux of the problem here. And there's a, there's a head on the front that bursts the pipe, basically pushes it out of the way. And then they just draw a new polyethylene pipe behind it. So the, the old pipe is basically obliterated in that process. The new pipe just follows along, you know, where the old pipe was, and then they make a watertight connection out at the street side, and then they'll make a connection here under a whole party thing at home. So they're two different things, the pipe bursting and the slip lining have, you know, each have a place. But for the most part, slip lining is only cost-effective if you're in a real tough area. We did one here a couple of years ago where sewer line ran through backyards, and there was all sorts of utility sheds and power poles and all the rest, and it just wasn't practical to get a machine in there. Then you're bound to slip lining probably as your only choice. But for the most part, going down the middle of the street, you're better off just to pick it up at this point. Ten, twenty years from now, it may be a different story, but we're here in twenty fourteen, fifteen, so.
Is it proper, procedure for all of these, so you're talking like Kakana, Appleton, that are all working on the same project? That do all of these community, where the homeowner pays fifty percent of the cost going by their homes?
Every.
I don't know, maybe Amy can, I'm not gonna.
Community is different. It's different.
So you just set up this fifty percent for Tom and Brilliant? So it's peak?
Yeah. I don't know if it's fifty percent, but yeah, every community is different.
There are some communities out there right now, the, their cities are not giving them no options. They're coming down your street, they've got their own plumber, they go from the street right into the home, and you pay for it. They didn't give them an option. And, and that's the way some of them, these cities are running. They're going to get it done to meet the mandate of Department of Natural Resources, and that's it. And that's what they're doing. They're not giving a whole bunch of option at all, period. We're coming in and we're doing it, they're gonna shove it down their throat. And that's what we don't wanna do. That's the least of our interests, making people do something we don't want them to do. That's poor business practice, as far as I'm concerned. We have to work together as a community to make this thing work. And that's what we need to do. And that's what we're trying to do here tonight.
I got two questions. One, Ron, you were just talking about either the slip lining or the pipe bursting, but then you, at the same time, you mentioned having to dig up the road? Is that, for the, for the three streets by us, or Trier, Dewey, Schli, obviously, they don't wanna, I mean, there's no road construction that needs to be done. Can that done, could that be done without digging up any part of the street?
Well, in those street areas, south of Ryan Street, where we're just doing lateral replacements, the, the project is intended to start at the back of the curb. We may have to take out a panel sidewalk, but we would, we would pipe burst and replace, or they could be dug up. But we would replace the lateral from basically the back of curb and into the structure itself. So the whole, it'd just be basically a pothole dug and the connection be made at that point. The issue about the slip lining, that, that's typically something that'd be done on a, you know, main line, an eight-inch or a twenty-four-inch main interceptor sewer. Those typically run right down the center of the street, so that's what the confusion was, and I apologize if that, that.
No, I, well, you just had to say digging up the streets, I was just curious if.
Yeah, the goal, because.
Where the hole is gonna happen.
Yeah, because at least two of those streets have been, I think it was two thousand and one, maybe, that we did the repaving job. So the goal is to not go and disrupt the street, because, you know, it's a very, you know, fresh in their memory that they just paid to go out there and have that street repaired. We did repairs to the curbs and sidewalks at that point, so nobody has a desire, including the city, to go out and completely tear apart the street like we did on Francis Street. So in order to save costs, the decision was made then to just do the connections in from the back of the curb to the structure.
So what happens with the, with the rest of it then, from the curb to the main line?
At some point in the future, when the streets do for a total reconstruction, the sewer line would probably be replaced then, the main line sewer would probably be replaced, and the lateral that lasts, say, fifteen feet to get to that point where the connection was done in twenty fifteen.
So we're leaving this potentially a seam?
Well, it's done with a, it's done with a watertight coupler. Shouldn't leak.
But there's still a potential, that you won't eliminate everything, because of what's.
Are the pipes in the street themselves actually good, or are they leaking too?
There's a few, there's a few defects in the main line. Surprisingly, very little though, as compared to the laterals themselves. Laterals, I mean, when you look at the television, they're, they're chock-full of roots, the pipes are partially collapsed. Water's pouring in all over. The main line has a couple defects here and there, but for the most part, the main line sanitary sewer is pretty intact. And we can tackle those pretty easy with a project like this, either by, if they're pretty shallow, we can, we can just dig them open. There'd be, you know, ten-by-ten patch in the street or something. Or those, we can go in and there's, there's trade names, they're called magnum liner or other liners. But we can actually put waterproof liners that get pulled into the pipe and, and put in, a little different than the slip lining. But we can do repairs inside of those main line pipes from, you know, between the manholes. We don't have to actually dig up the street. We have to just decide which is more economical and which is better. So you can do repairs in that main line that you can't necessarily do with the laterals. Laterals, a lot of times, you know, that they'll make, you know, turns and bends between. Laterals, a lot of times, you know, that they'll make, you know, turns and bends between the street and the home. Um, so you're, you're kind of limited in your options of how you repair those as compared to the main line. That's usually straight as an arrow down the middle of the street, so.
The only reason I say that is because I can picture in two years, all of a sudden, you're going to want to replace Columbus Avenue, which I live on, after doing all this because it's not really that efficient to do it like this. You know, compared to, like I said, I understood this was going to be when the street was replaced, this stuff was going to be handled. So I think there should be a little bit better plan as far as like what streets are going to get addressed and, you know, know when they're going to get addressed. Because you go through all this work, which is pretty much inefficient and hard to do rather than just, because, and then have to do it in two years anyway.
Well, the cost unfortunately escalates by factor probably of four or five. If, if each of these streets that had the I-N-I goal also included the, say, partial reconstruction like we're going to do on the north side of, of Ryan Street. Um, the total project cost, now a lot of that's city cost, which, you know, still formed by the taxpayers. But, um, I'm thinking of the, the special assessments on Francis Street, for example. The total project cost, the total amount that the city wrote check off to the contractor was, uh, right on the order of, say, half a million dollars. Fifty thousand dollars was assessed. So you can see, um, for these type of projects, the, uh, the burden on the city just becomes insurmountable. They can't, they can't possibly do everything that the DNR is requesting that they get tackled. There's just not enough capital. The city, the city can't borrow enough money to do all of those street reconstruction projects and the laterals in the timeframe that the DNR wants it done. The DNR doesn't want to wait twenty-eight years for us to get to the point where the street is shot enough that it's due to be replaced. And then we're going to get laterals at that point. They're not that patient. Is that?
It's an ongoing maintenance problem in any city. It's a continuous improvement. I mean, you have no choice. It just, it's wear and tear every year. Everything gets older every year we go by, you know, so it's, it is what it is.
Ron, what's the difference between the sanitary underneath the road and the laterals?
Uh, a lot of these older portions of town, they're identical.
Okay.
Um, they were put in, you know, they were sewered up, you know, in the same area. So a lot of laterals and, and the main lines are.
So when, when the roads were done in two thousand, there wasn't any sewer work done?
Well, the, the city wasn't under waters.
Period. It wasn't replaced at that time.
We didn't replace the main line. We did do some spot repairs on the, on the eight inch sanitary corrected. There's some, you know, broken section in the pipe and lamp holes that we eliminated and some, you know. So there were some defects that we, we televised it before. We, we almost always, I mean, we always televise that main line sewer before we do a road project. I mean, we've been doing that for twenty, twenty-five years. Um, but it hasn't been until the last, say, five or six or seven years that our attention has, has gone to what's going on with the laterals. And that's being driven by these overflows and the, you know, the orders that the city is under to rectify that.
So they were better maintained. They were better maintained than the laterals. Some of those issues might have to be addressed today had they not been addressed when the street was torn up.
Well, yeah, the, the defects that we fixed in two thousand would still be there today if we hadn't fixed them. Sure.
Well, s- some of the concerns are, some of the meetings that I had to with Department of Natural Resources and other mayors and, and, uh, uh, community people is, is, when you, when you, when you have leaky sewer, you have gray water going into the ground. And as you all know, there's been water shortage. Brilliant is one of them. And you're getting gray water, contaminated water into our aquifers. And what is our aquifers? That's our drinking water. And there are many cities, as you heard, just maybe outside, right outside here, the, I think Morrison and Waiside, when that big, uh, uh, menorah tank broke and seeped in the ground because they had rock surfaces, not clay surfaces. And it went in and contaminated the wells over there. So, you know, here's homes, you know, that maybe will never be utilized. They have to be potable water all the time. And this is some of the concerns that the Department of Natural Resources add with leaky laterals. Gray water going into the ground, getting into the aquifers. And some of our water surfaces is, our water is close to the surface, not, not around here as much. But, you know, that is, that is some of the worries we have. Once we contaminate our aquifers, they're junked. We can't do anything with them. Now we have to drill new wells like we're doing now. Uh, you know, not because of contamination, because we ran out of water over here on Main Street. That's some of the concerns that we have here that we have to watch over, very careful for. Because now we're limited where we can go to get water.
Has the DNR ever made note of any specific issues that came from laterals leaking or?
No, 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 they.
Even in Milwaukee.
When we're talking nine million gallons every five years, if, say, even if half of that is gray water and the rest is rainwater, that's getting dumped into nine hundred million gallons in the marsh and into the river. And by that point, you could probably drink it and you'd be fine. So there are, not that you're aware of anyway.
Nope, nope, nope. But that's some of their concerns for future because of the, you know, of, of the water being shortage in the aquifers being created. And, you know, in our area, around here, I'm off the stuff a little bit, but our area, it's all clay. Water does not seep through the ground. It runs off. As you know, that's why we have so many floods here in Brilliant. We're all around it. It's red clay all the way around us. Water runs off and runs down a creek. And then we've got, we've got another issue with water flooding in our city. So it's continuous roundabout. Um, is there any more questions or any, you know, as we move along here, we understand your, your concerns. And we hope that, you know, you as homeowners and taxpayers work with us to get through this. Because it, it belongs to all of us. It's not, it's not just your problem. It's, it's our problem also. Um, you know, like I said, you know, it, it, it's something that we're mandated, we have to do. We as elected officials and appointed, utilities appointed by me. And, and our elected official is being voted on by you people as citizens. Um, you know, it's not a glorious job to do these things. And, uh, we know you all work hard. You go to work every day and you try to make a living. And then we come up here and asking you, you gotta spend extra money for something that we can't control. We just got to do what the mandate is forced onto us. And, and I sure hope when you leave here tonight, that that's in your thoughts, that it's not, that we're trying to ram something down your throat. But each one of us will be doing this and we'll be asking the same question. Why our street? Well, we, it's just the way it's going to be, I guess. Whoever sits in his chair in years to come is going to be doing the same thing I'm doing. This is what we have to do and this is what I'm elected to do. We have to carry out the, the state statutes and the laws of the, our great Department of Natural Resources. So is there any more questions of Amy or Ron at this time? Amy? Yes.
Why can't we level this financial load evenly across all the taxpayers? Since we're all in it together, you're going to get it eventually. Why not just have us all continuously pay for this? Instead of five years to pay out fifty, five hundred bucks, give me twenty, thirty years to do it. Or by the next property owner even might get it.
I. If somebody can answer that. We can't borrow the money.
Yeah, we're under limits. Cities.
I can't either.
Yeah, it, it, and that's, that's, that's what concerns us. That nobody can pay us, but we have to continuously do it, you know, like we said earlier. Every couple of months, Lori has to report to, and then Grinson, the head, head chief up there in DNR. Where are we at? What are we doing? And if we don't continue doing something, they're going to have their, one of their people down here living here in Brilliant. And then it's worse. Once you start getting those people breathing down your neck, you got them here every month. And, and they'll tell you what to do. You don't tell them what to do. I want this done. I want this done. I want this done at this time. And then we're really going to eat the bullet then. We have no choice.
When you, when you say everybody's going to pay for, like, what, what are we talking for a timeframe as far as like all the streets being done?
Yeah.
Because I see it five years. I could see this being twenty years down the road.
And you, I need more. How about thirty? How about thirty years?
And then, then we're done and then maybe we have to start out, whoever's, whoever's behind us, if Brilliant still exists, you know, if they don't turn up to a big duck pond like they're trying to get us to be here, you know. And it's, it's continuous. When will it stop? Maybe it never will stop, you know. Amy?
So that's, that's what infrastructure is, is that it be maintained and updated?
What you do, what you, what you did today, twenty years down the road, it might be obsolete. We, we're going to, somebody else could be sitting here doing the same thing as we are, discussing it. You know, just, there's no end to it. Just like life. You live and then you die. So what's the difference? Is there any, any more discussion, as I said, Ron, as a step that Amy brought out, how we're going to proceed with this? There's any other questions or your concerns or if you can help the engineers out, like, um, we just had a discussion where this lateral is going and what we're doing here. That would really help these guys out. You know your, you know your block, your city or your, your streets. Anything that we can save money on, hey, feel free to get ahold of Ron when you come walking around, him and Dennis or whoever. Yes.
I got one more quick question on the.
Yes, go ahead.
On the mini storm sewers. I'm, I guess I'm not clear what that's going to do. I mean, it, it sounds to me like it's just a sump pump hookup? Well, is that what, I mean, so if you don't have a sump pump in your house, do you not need one or?
I'm going to back up half a step. Um, this is discussed before, but not at this meeting. With, if, if you've got a, if you've got a house overflowing with water for nineteen thirty, um, and your lateral's leaking like a sieve, uh, you might have water, you know, from down, so it's maybe around the foundation or, or from around the foundation. That water that you're seeing in the televising is, is finding its way through the, maybe the stone bedding and your footings or whatnot. And it's, and it's relieving itself through your sanitary lateral and it's ending up in Peters Park or down at the school. The issue is that when we go through and do a project and we button up that lateral so that, that groundwater, that's now for the last, you know, thirty years maybe that this pipe has been defective. Um, when we button that up so that it's watertight now, that's the goal, is to make sure that no groundwater can get into that, that pipe. Uh, it's going to look for some other place to go. If, um, if you're in an area that maybe has never had a problem before, you might be fine. But there are certainly, and we run into this in, in cases with Highway Ten project where, um, people's water problem with their basement will get worse if you seal up this, you know, if you've got a sanitary lateral that's leaking ten gallons a minute and you fix that problem, you're going to have to come for where that ten gallons a minute worth of water is going to go. So, um, you may have to have a sump pump crock installed and a pump and, and pump that water out to the surface. In a lot of these areas, there is no storm system. There's maybe some drains on Main Street and drains out on, say, Columbus Avenue end. Um, but there may not be main line storm sewer that runs down the street. So what we'll do is we'll run a, an eight inch storm sewer up the terrace, um, up to cut through people's driveways. And we'll, we'll put a mini storm, what we call a mini storm, an eight inch storm system in there. And then we'll stub out each property, a four inch PVC pipe, two, three feet deep. Um, you can take that pipe then and then run that the last, say, twenty feet or something to your home and create the connection for your sump pump. Um, because you're, if you're going to pump that water out, you need a place to go. And the city recognizes that in most of these, uh, streets, there is no good place. There, there are a lot of cases, there are main line storms to just run a lateral off of. Um, so we'll just run mini storms up each terrace and kick those laterals off to each property. And then you can make the connection from that point to your home.
So it goes in regardless of whether you have a sump pump or decide you're going to put a sump pump in?
We put the mini storm and the stub into each property.
Okay.
Um, the, it's up to the property owner. You can, you can choose to not put a crock in your basement, never put a pump in, not run that line from the back of the sidewalk to your home. That's your choice. Um, but the city felt the obligation to at least provide the option so that if you need someplace to pump to, that there's a pipe there, you can go dig down to it and run it in and connect up your sump pump. Uh, and those are intended only for sump pump connections. Um, we don't want to hook up the backyard drains and every roof downspout and everything else under the sun because, um, we make them modest to keep them economical. Um, we don't, and they'll be a lot more prone to plugging and all the rest if we start having, you know, downspouts and all, all that tied into them. So they're made just for sump pump connections. Um, the goal is that, uh, right now we've got sanitary sewer pipes that are eight inch diameter full of clear water that's seeping in them. What we want instead is an eight inch storm sewer line full of water that's coming from your sump pump. That's the ultimate goal here.
I'm on Tru Street right behind here and there's a city sewer, or not sewer, drain water running through my backyard. And I just had drain cable put in and I'm hooked up to that city drain.
Through your backyard?
Through the storm sewer. So would I need that?
Right. When, um, I'll give the example on, on the Francis Street project. There were, I don't remember the number of properties, but the properties on the, on the east side of Francis Street abutted a creek. The city made the decision that it, we're not going to put in the infrastructure and charge those property owners because they, they, they can run a pipe out and many of them have run out from their home to the creek. So, um, in the interest of being fair to the property owners on that one half of the street, we have run a mini storm sewer because they have an option. Um, the survey that will go around prior to, uh, construction will, that'll be one of the questions. There's going to be, you know, a number of questions on there. And you'll be asked if you have a sump pump right now, if you do, you know, does it connect to something? You know, like you said, it connects to an existing, um, drain line somewhere. Uh, so we'll know about that when we're doing the project. Now, I don't know what specifics is where you're at. If you're in the middle of the block, we may still have to go past your house with that mini storm system, even though you're.
It's right across the fence.
Well, you know, we'll deal with the specifics when we get to the point of designing things, but, uh, but yeah, the goal is to give everybody a lateral that needs it. If you've already got a connection somehow, um, you know, like in this Francis Street example, because you can go over right to the creek, well, then that will be part of the project.
Lori, I spoke to you last week and I asked you, um, for an estimate of, of cost. And you gave me the average of Francis Street. What was that number you gave me?
Uh, that was on the private lateral itself only probably, and it was about twenty, twenty-five hundred on the private lateral, I said. I didn't include the mini storm sewer. Because like Amy's, or Ron just explained, on that street, there was not, on one side of the street, there wasn't a lot of.
Because I wanted a question to ask you, Lori. And for a more honest answer on what I'm asking you to cost the project. And then I see a two thousand dollar difference.
I just wanted to add one thing. Somebody had asked, um, you know, what other communities are doing? And I kind of Googled it while, while, while we were talking and whatnot. Um, and it's a huge difference from, you know, obviously like you, you guys all said, from city to city or whatnot. But one that I had pulled up here is, um, there's, you know, for, I think it was Oshkosh and Green Bay, you know, it says right on here, depending on the necessary corrective action, residents could be expected to pay anywhere from a hundred to seventy-five hundred dollars plus. Um, and they're only giving out low interest loans, um, and, uh, special assessment. Um, and then they're creating a reward incentive program for voluntary compliance. So I guess I'm just throwing it out there that, you know, if they're, they're going to, like you said, they're, they're forcing you, you have to do this. And if you, if you comply nicely, then we might help a little bit, you know, so.
Yeah, that little is about that little.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. So at least we're trying to work together.
Right.
Yes, um, we, we got the sheet with the, uh, estimate of the, the assessment on there. It was also mentioned on page fifteen there that the cost would also be split between a tax levy and utility rates. Do we know what type of increases that might also be?
Well, the increase for your levy would be, um, the, the tax levy itself, the city has a certain amount they can't go over. So we'd have to borrow for that. That's why we're borrowing. That's all part of this financial capital plan that we're putting together. And then we also looked at the utility rates. Um, the sewer rate, our financial advisors felt at this time, um, we're at a point where we can meet the borrowing for it and meet that debt capacity or that, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, the, uh, the, the payment each year that you. Um, the, uh, the, the payment each year that you put in for the, the borrowing. Um, so we're okay there as far as the sewer rates go. Water rates are gonna be increasing because of, of the construction of the new well. But those rates, that's why we did the five year capital plan and that's why we picked out projects that we can afford, so not to cause a big increase in, in the tax rates and water rate, our sewer rate increases. So that was the, the, the reason why we went through that process.
Water, water rates, we don't know what's gonna happen because that's still with the commission and management, they're deciding what. You should charge for a lot of it.
Hey Lori, while we're doing all these repairs, if the DNR's, they still find us even though you're trying to make the repairs or do they kinda work with you since they know you're working with us?
So far they've been working with us?
Yeah.
I guess that's the only answer we can give you so far. When we received these notices of, of violation, the last one we received listed the dates, the four dates that we were, we bypassed and were violation and the last paragraph said at this time, there's not gonna be any enforcement imposed on you, but continue to keep us updated on where you are. So at this time, they're, they're okay, they're watching us though.
Is there any other questions or discussion you would like to participate in at this time? Okay, at this time I'm gonna be closing the public information meeting. Anything from the council, utility, anything you wanna discuss in, in the meantime? Harry Dunn, we make a motion to adjourn.
Pardon me? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Walden and sent by Bob to adjourn. All in favor of that motion, stick your hand high.
High.
Hold the motion, carry. Thank you, everybody.